Good evening, welcome to the City of Lowell zoning board of appeal public meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or any electronic device, to please put it on vibrate, or shut it off, or take your calls out in the hallway to not disturb the meeting. We're moving on to continued business. ZB dash two thousand and nineteen dash forty-two, a special permit. The applicant is eight eighteen properties LLC at four zero eight East Merrimack Street. The applicant is seeking a special permit approval to legalize the use of a property that has operated as an apartment building with six residential units. The building is in the traditional neighborhood multifamily TMF zoning district, and the use requires special permit approval under section four point five point two point one to change or substantially extend an existing nonperforming use, and for any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Want to just tell us about?
My name is Marcos, I'm the owner of the building at four eight East Merrimack Street. So, just to remind you guys, I purchased this building on August twenty-eighth, and when I purchased the building, there is six units inside this building, however, one of them is not recognized by the city. So, my goal here is to go through the legal process of making that happen.
Okay. All right, sir, is there anything else you wish to share with the, to the board?
So, I supplied all the documentation that was requested from the previous meeting, and also I got a letter from the tenant that's currently living in the building now, and she actually resided in this unit that's in question for over five years. So, it's something that's been there for more than ten years.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is that it? Is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. So, now we're gonna open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. We're gonna open up comments, questions to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for providing the updated information, including the site plan and the layout of the apartments and the dimensions, which is very helpful. My concern was the unit in the back with the six, the unit number six, being very, very, very small, it's like three hundred, I think it's like three hundred.
Yeah, it's a little bit over three hundred square feet. I also did some research, most hotel rooms around that size, and like I said, one of the tenants lived there for over five years, and she said, you know, it provided her everything that she needed.
Yeah, and I appreciate that as well, providing the letter of the former tenant, well, the tenant, current tenant, used to be the former tenant. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't really like getting units very, really that small, but this, since this was already in existence, previously you had a tenant who was residing there for five years. Previously, there doesn't appear to be any opposition to this that has appeared from the public, so I can, I can see being in favor of this, this special permit.
Thank you.
So, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions. The new site plan that was provided today, I didn't see how you were going to accommodate trash receptacles?
So, actually, one of the printouts that I sent in had a satellite footage. It was the one that was colored, so actually it shows the dumpster, the location of the dumpster currently.
Okay. That seems to be in conflict with the last parking space, as far as how a person would actually navigate access to that.
So, we've actually been parking like this for, since I purchased the unit, and it's, it's, it's been, it works. It's a little tight, but it works.
Okay. All right. So, you have a dumpster, then, that you have co-mingling recyclable material?
Not recyclables, that sold the dumpsters mainly for just trash, household trash.
So, you've got a six-unit structure with no recycling?
No recycling, I can accommodate that if, you know, if the board requests it.
I think as a...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Right, I think that recycling should be considered in all residences, especially where you have six units here. Okay. And we have all single-bedroom units, so that's kind of the idea with only one car per unit. All right. And I'm glad we are looking at our flow plans, to understand exactly how everything kind of works out here, and, you know, I, I kinda like the idea of these small units, I think that there's certainly a market for it in Lowell.
Exactly, especially with the, you know, with the university nearby, and there's certainly a big market for it.
Is that what your tenant make up currently? Are any of them students?
Yeah, yeah, so actually, two out of the four tenants I have right now are students.
Great, great. All right, I'm glad that you came back to us with this new material, it really helps me understand exactly what you're asking for, and I think I can be in favor of this.
Thank you.
Especially if we can make a condition that you provide for recycling onsite.
Sure, I can do that, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The comments indicate that a recent site visit by the deputy fire chief and the building commissioner clearly state that the studio as proposed is totally appropriate living quarters. I understand the, the concerns that two of my colleagues had, I think that's been satisfied, and as a result, I'll vote in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. Jamena.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think it's a, it's a good business for the, for the city, I just wanna wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jamena. Thank you, sir, for all the updated plans you submitted. You know, I, I think, I agree with my colleagues, you know, I can see this as a, as a six-unit building, and, you know, it makes sense to me, it's been used as, as that function. And are you amenable to the condition of having recycling onsite?
Absolutely.
Okay. If there's no further comments or questions, we'll move on to, to a vote. Can we have a vote, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand and nineteen dash forty-two for a special permit for property located at four oh eight East Merrimack Street, for a special permit to provide for six residential units with the condition that the applicant provide for recycling onsite.
Second.
Motion second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the condition.
Member Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Brier.
Approve the conditions.
Member Jamena.
Approve the condition.
Correct, so you've been, you've been approved.
Thank you very much.
With the best of luck.
Thank you, you guys have a good night.
You too, thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda under continued business, ZB dash two thousand and nineteen dash forty-seven, the petition is a special permit in variance, the applicant is Attorney George Theodore, the property located at twenty-three Exeter Street. The applicant is seeking special permit in variance approval to demolish a nonperforming garage and construct a duplex at twenty-three Exeter Street. The lot is in a traditional mixed-use zoning district, and requires special permit approval under section twelve point one point B for the use variance under section five point one for minimum frontage, minimum lot size, minimum side yard setback, the front yard setback, and minimum lot area per dwelling unit, a variance under section five point one point ten for minimum lot width, a variance under section six point one point ten for the maximum curb cut, and if any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and thank you to the board for giving us an opportunity to come back. We provided you with an updated site plan, we believe we met the requirements, but I just wanna, wanna go back and clarify one point from the prior meeting, in which it was, it was represented to the board that the property across the street at four twenty-two Exeter Street is in separate ownership, is not owned by my client, Mr. Bogwah, it's owned by Kamenga Hinga, who happens to be his son. I don't believe that's an issue, but I wanted to bring that, that, that to the attention of the board. And here with me tonight is Mr. Bogwah, as well as Sean Dolan from Chess Engineering. We, at the last meeting, the board requested a number of changes, and it's, the changes that they requested were to, to minimize the impact of this project upon the street and the community, to allow it to fit in. What we did is, we have shown that the, moved the property up sufficiently, so that there's a setback of thirty-six feet, and by doing that, we have increased the green space at the rear of the property. At the same time, by increasing the green space at the rear of the property, we've also increased the green space in the front of the property. It was a request to decrease the width of the driveways, which we've done. We've decreased those, and each of the driveways were twelve feet, combining twenty-four feet, now they're each ten feet, making them twenty feet. As a result of that, we've increased the green space on both sides of that property. And I think if you went up and down West Exeter Street, and you took a look at the properties on the street, you'll see that this property with the changes that were made would have considerable amount of green space on it, in comparison to some of the other properties, which is a good thing. Also, in being attentive to the neighbors, we were asked to have the site plan indicate what the height of the property is, and so we have the height listed as thirty-seven feet, which is less than what the maximum requirement is, and that I had a question for the architect, and they had indicated to me, it's thirty-seven feet to the ridge, thirty-two feet to the mean on the roof, which, that's how it's described to me, and I'm not an architect, but I'm just relaying this information. Now, with respect to the, the decrease in the width of the driveway, with that being done, and this was one of the requirements in reviewing the, the minutes of the prior meeting, that perhaps that can be done, and that would meet the usable open space requirement, not requiring a variance, and I believe we've met that, and that is indicated on our plan, and we've removed that, we believe that, that provides for it. And also, we talked about putting up privacy fences, we depicted that on the site plan, of putting the privacy fences up, and also it's supplemented by a landscape plan, which we were requested and required to do, so we have presented to you with the landscape plan as well, showing the, the, the green space, the pervious area, showing the proposed plantings that would be done, and identifying those. And also, you had presented, and we had that with DPD, and I think it was, it was reviewed favorably, the, the detailed drainage plan of this lot, to keep everything onsite, which we, we went ahead and designed, so that we would comply with the requirements of the city, and keep any of the drain runoff on the site, and we felt that that was extremely important, given the, the lot size and the impact on the community, and so, you know, that was completed as well. We are here tonight with Mr. Sean Dolan, who is from Chess Engineering, and will all be here available to answer any other questions, and I want to thank the board for what they've offered at our last public hearing, and hopefully, we've incorporated all those changes in the plans that we've provided to you, that we've satisfied you, and we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore. Now, we're gonna open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in, in opposition? In opposition? Oh, yeah, if you just approach the lectern, please write your name and address on the document, and just...
Okay. Do I sign now or later?
You can sign out, that's fine, sir.
Okay.
Just name and address for the record.
My, my name is Gilberto Iambacuan. My wife and I own Twenty-One Exeter Street, which is nineteen and twenty-one, which is duplex, that was built sideways. We purchased that back in nineteen, nineteen ninety-eight. We, we live there, and we plan to live there, you know, for foreseeable future. So, the, I'm not against the city getting taxes, that's good, because there's money coming in, I'm not against our progress, and I've been, I'm in favor of that. The only thing is that eleven Exeter Street is a three-story high building, and then the gentleman here wants to build a three-story building, so our house, which is sideways, is gonna be like a sandwich, and we're, we're gonna be the bologna on, in the middle of the two breads, and, and it's gonna be so, too close, in case of a fire, you know, gotta forbid, and I, you know, and like I said, once again, Gilberto Iambacuan, and the United States Air Force veteran, we celebrated last Monday, and, and I'm sure if any of you guys served, thank you for your service. So, the other thing too is, I know you, you know, the last meeting, they mentioned something about the parking, I know you don't wanna hear, so, since it's plenty of parking, according with him, why does he need to build a, a garage for each unit, if he can park on the driveway? That will bring, the, the attorney said that all the houses around there are, is gonna be equal, no, all the houses have two floors, none of them is gonna be that high, like the one they proposed him to do. So, if they go around and look around, that's what we want, we want contingency, we want something to look like the area, no something that is gonna be sticking out, and, you know, that's, like I say, once again, I'm not against progress, I'm not against, besides, we're gonna need now one percent of the tax for the conservation that we just passed as borders, we passed it last November sixth, so we're gonna need one percent more, so that's good. And that's my main objection, other than that, and I wanna yield the microphone to Roger, he has something to say, and has a picture to show you guys, and I wanna thank you for your time, and I hope I clarify what I'm trying to say, and thank you for, for listening to me.
Thank you, sir, thank you for the comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Yeah?
I have a picture I wanna show you.
Yeah, you can approach, sir.
If you don't mind, sir, if you just, comments on them, you know? Roger Norman. I live at thirty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, just, whatever comments you previously were saying, I don't think it got on the record here, about what you were trying to say about the, about the photo.
Well, right now, all the houses, mostly all the houses back this way are all two stories with the roof. If he builds one with a garage, it's gonna be three stories with the roof, which is gonna be out of whack, going down the street, and to me, it's gonna make the, it's not gonna increase the value of the place, it's gonna decrease it, because it's gonna make everything else look weird. And you're gonna give him variances for the side, the, the, the front, back, whatever, and I don't know why he has to put garages, to make it higher. I know you're gonna do what you want, but to me, it's, it's gonna, there's no need of it, you could put a cellar. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Yes, hi, my name's Jason Prevost Senior, I live, also live at thirty-five Exeter. I'm not gonna sit up here and talk about the parking issues that we had, my problem is, is it's been repeated here again, that twenty-three has no correlation to twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-eight Exeter, but yet, the only people that are allowed to rent spaces off of twenty-three are from twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-eight, and not only do they rent the spaces on twenty-three, they pay rent in those spaces on one check. So, not only does his son own the property across the street, which seems to be a conflict of interest, they also pay his son for the property that he owns. So, to me, that's a business partner relationship, if no one else is allowed to use the space and rent it, like he says he does, for the good of the neighborhood, only they can, how is that not tied into each other? When your son owns the other half, and the only people that can rent this space is his tenants, and they also pay one check. Now, unfortunately, none of the property, tenants would come here, because they're afraid to get evicted, and, but, they've told us they only pay one check, they pay extra for the property across the street, 'cause far as we know, they may least sold it together. So, I just, I don't know, there seems, there needs to be an investigation on what loophole is being used here, because there is a big conflict of interest. A judge can't try a case that their family member's in, neither can a police officer, it's a conflict of interest. But yet, twenty-three can rent exclusively to the people across the street, and they can pay on one check, and there's no correlation, I just don't get that. I don't know if there's can be an explanation, or how they're not correlated, probably not, but I think there needs to be some sort of investigation on what loophole is being used here, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. So, we'll open up comments to the board, comments and questions, but, Mr. Theodore, before we do, is there anything, are any, any other comments you wanted to add, or say, or about anything, before we open it to the board?
The only other item here is, you know, I know, I went through the, the minutes and looked at the prior meeting, and there was a discussion about getting it down, they would like to see it at thirty or thirty-five feet, and, for the height of the building, and I, I think we've come close with thirty-seven. So, you know, I, I, I think in that regard, that we were sympathetic to the impact on the neighborhood, and, and, and at the same time, being sensitive to the development interests of my client, who's investing in this. With respect to some of the other arguments that I hear, I don't see them as being relevant or any portion about what the requirements are before the board, or anything, but, we'd like to answer any of the questions, that we have worked hard over the last two weeks to address the issues that were before the board before, that came back with respect to moving the building up, increasing the green space, decreasing the width of the driveway, placing access from the rear decks, putting up the privacy fences, and depicting them on the revised site plan, and going forward and providing a landscaping plan as well, that we went ahead and did that, and, and we believe that, you know, it was our intent before to move it back to make more space, however, it brought to our attention that to, and we, we made it fit with the drainage and the surface, but, you know, it's a better plan, moving it up and creating more green space, rather than having more pavement over there, and we've, at the same time, we've removed the requirements for having another variance. So, I do ask for your support in this matter, and look forward to answering any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Theodore. So, comments and questions for the board, the chair recognizes Mr. Jamena.
Yes, Mr. Chair, can I, can Mr. Gilberto come back on the, to the, to the, to the microphone? The first gentleman was against it. Yes. So, looks like your main concern is the view, right?
Right, well, you know, because if I ever wanna sell the house, who's gonna buy it, if it's in between two, two big tall buildings? The, the value of my house is gonna go down, okay? I intend to live there, I'm not, and I'm not coming in, you know, I'm not the guy that is coming in and trying to make a fast buck and then disappear, you know? When, when Roger had, about ten years ago, he built his house, I was a hundred percent support, because I knew he was gonna be owner-occupied, and he, and he was gonna do a good job and enhance the area, and when, when I came in, and over here, and another room over there, and I said, yes, I'm in favor of it, but in this case, if somebody that is coming in to, you know, build and then buy, you will never see him again, if he was owner-occupied, I will agree with everything he says, if he promised to live there, like twenty years or forty years, like I'm gonna be living there. That's my, and the concern right now is that the height is gonna be too, too high, too high, and we're not gonna get any, from the north, I had to kiss the sun goodbye, you know, and usually get my vitamin D from the sun, so...
So, how is it gonna satisfy you, even if it's a three-story?
Well, like he said, the lawyer just said that they're gonna build the house, looking like the rest of the houses, if you go up and down the street, no, all the, all the streets have the two floors, first floor and second floor. Okay? So, that's, that's my main concern, that I'm looking ahead, I'm gonna look like, you know, the houses in New York, they have, they build skyscrapers, and in the middle is a little house there, that's how the house, my, my house is gonna look like.
Yeah, I, I can see your concern, that's, that's why the last time when you guys came.
Yeah, that's, that's my main, my main, if he was gonna build something like, Roger showed the picture, it's fine, you know, that's how it should be, because then, that would be looking like the rest of the houses in the, in the, in the street, not only on Esquerre. street, not only on Esqueret, but also on Barker Street, which is the one that we're across. So.
What I'm trying to say is, the last time when you guys came, you know, I kind of sympathize with, you know, the effect of folks who came.
Well, my daughters came in because I'm working. Right now, I'm taking off hours from work. As soon as we finish here, I have to go back to work. I work second shift, so.
So the point I want to make is, the board here is, we're here to find out whether he meets the criteria. And if he meets them, we don't have the power to reject him, you know.
Right, well, I mean, you know. You know better, you know, you're the experts on this. And yes, I'm just looking at it from the point of view of my interest and also the interest of the area. Because I know that they told me that parking, you don't want, nobody wants to hear about parking, but that's another issue. And, and the lawyer said that the other area, the other thing that Roger, the other gentleman mentioned is not relevant. Sure is relevant. Because fifteen years ago, I tried to buy that land, and they told me that I couldn't buy it, that I was one deed with the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-eight. And the twenty-three was one deed, that they could not separate it. Because my, my idea was to buy it and build a single family and move my wife and my three daughters in there and then rent the duplex. That's what was my idea. But I was told no, I couldn't do that. I know that the law changed in two thousand twelve, I believe, the zoning laws in two thousand twelve. That's why I was told. So.
Yeah, I can, I can see your point, but, I mean, I'm just thinking of like a downtown area, you're going to have houses that are taller than some others.
Right, but you know, like I said, I'm not against progress, I'm not against getting, we need more tax money, you know, because we want to support all the services that the city overall needs. And I have a daughter still in high school, so we need money for the high school, so, and in favor of all that. But I hope you see my, my point.
Yeah, well, as much as the city needs tax, but I'm really concerned about you, the neighbors, because you live there.
Right, so.
But if he meets the criteria, we gave him, I think, our hands are tied, basically. That's my point, I hope.
You know, that's, that's my main, my main concern is, you know, he had the picture, I don't know if you saw it, and something like that, you know, it looks nice.
Yeah, which is basically the same thing, Mr. Roger, right? That's the same, that was your concern too.
You didn't see it?
Yeah, I can see it from here.
There's no garages, so it stays with the, with the contour of the whole streets. All the, mostly, the whole area is like that, two heights with the roof. The only ones that are not are on the main drag.
Because if it's going to be like that, you know.
Without the garage, it's for the cellar, then it's not going to skyscape over his house either. It's going to stay even with the same height.
Because my house, I don't know how high it is. I mean, it's low, so I don't know if it's thirty feet or, or twenty-eight feet or twenty-five feet. My problem is that, you know, this is, this is my house, and it's going to be like this. So.
Okay, I've heard you, Mr. Chair. I think, let me reserve some of my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jamena. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier.
Well, as I said at the last.
Could I make one, could I make one point, Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Brier?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Theodore.
I just wanted to state that from the last meeting, we were a part of, I believe, of moving the, the, the building up further was to accommodate the neighbor next door so that we had moved it up so that it provided some more space. And so that was the reason, I believe, that that was, that, that request was made. Also, going back to redesign this, to take the garage out of the first floor, what that would do is, that would increase pavement because parking would have to be exterior. At least we have two cars that will be in the garage. And if we didn't have that for first floor, then we would have to have the parking of two cars in the driveway. And so, again, that would take up more pavement, less green space. So that's something that we believe adds to this plan here and increases the green space. That's all I, I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore. Mr. Brier, the chair is yours, sir.
Yes, as I, as I stated the last time we met, I am, I am sensitive and respectful to the, to the residents. You have every right to be here and explain the, what you believe to be the inconveniences that you would endure if this was, it was built. Having heard your concerns, I just don't, I just don't believe they're relevant to what, to the evidence that we can use to make this decision. At the last meeting, I spoke in favor of this project as it was. I think the enhancements that have been made only leads me to be more confident that, that we should support this petition. I don't mean to say this in an argumentative way, but it was expressed at the last meeting that if this was owner occupied, the neighbors could, could live with that. I don't understand that argument. If, if it's inconvenient and bad for the neighborhood, if he sells it, then it's inconvenient and bad for the neighborhood if it's owner occupied. So you kind of defeated your own argument there. Again, I support the petition. I think the enhancements indicate that your neighbor is willing to work for the, and he has heard your concerns, and he's made the necessary allowances to satisfy this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. But before I do, I want to draw some, I want to highlight a couple of the properties that exist on the street nearby. So at nine, eight, and seven Exeter, there are three-story structures. And all three of those structures have raised foundations. So if you do the math on those structures, which are one down, I guess from, I think it's eleven, which is, I think, your property. So, so the next house down from your property is a three-story structure with a raised foundation. And I believe those are nine-foot ceilings in those structures, so somewhere around a nine-and-a-half, ten-foot floor-to-floor height with a raised foundation puts you at a height at the roof edge of roughly thirty-three feet. Maybe even thirty-two, thirty-four, something in that range. So that's what you're talking about at the three structures at the beginning of the street, which is, other than eleven, is adjacent to this lot. And what the applicant is suggesting is, I think, twenty-seven foot eve, if I do the math right, I think you said, is that correct, twenty-seven foot eve? In fact, I'd like to see if we could make a condition, roof eve.
I, yeah, I believe the first floor is nine, and the next two floors are eight. So that would put it at?
Sean Donlin. I'm going to just approximate the number similar to how you just did there. I think you probably have.
Did you say your name and address?
Sean Donlin, representing the owner here. This is, this is a preliminary plan, obviously, but you have a top of foundation somewhere about a foot above average grade, right, to make all your drainage work, and then about a nine-foot floor-to-floor height from the basement level of the first floor, the same from the first floor to the second floor, about an eight-foot wall height to the top of that third-floor top plate. So that gets you eighteen plus eight, it's about twenty, twenty-six feet, yeah, before the rich pitch.
Well, I, I think if we establish no higher than twenty-seven roof edge or roof eve, right, as a condition, that would put it in reasonable proximity because the ones at the beginning of the street, that roof edge, roof eve, one of those three-story buildings, is in the thirty-three range. And then if you look at the older structures going up the street beyond your lot, they all have raised foundations, and they all have probably nine-foot ceilings inside. They're older structures. And so you're looking at a roof eve in those structures in the twenty-one, twenty-two-foot range. So you're kind of in the middle. You're around twenty-one, twenty-two at the upper side of the street with the raised foundations and whatnot, and then you're at the thirty-three range, so you're at the twen-. I, I think that you've made a good combination there for fitting in with the neighborhood other than eleven. Eleven is the anomaly here. There's nothing we can do about that. That's sort of a new construction that was done that doesn't fit in with the adjacent structure. It's only two stories versus three. And I think that zoning allows for forty-five feet, is that right, Jared?
Forty-seven.
As a height? So we're well under zoning as far as what we could have.
That's correct. Forty-five feet is the maximum height.
So I think the applicant's being reasonable, in my opinion, as to what we're doing for a height. The fact that it has a garage is a big plus for values. And I love what you've done with the site. I think that, you know, the, going through the extra step with the landscape plan, showing pear trees, dogwoods, arrobitis for screening, a fence, lots of green space, moving the structure towards the middle to give you a nice green space in the back. I think there's a lot of pluses. I will have one other condition, though, if I could, and that is to correct the site plan to show the stair that shows up in the floor plans so that we can accommodate the stair with the, I believe they're lilacs that you're showing on the landscape plan that need to be accommodated.
They're in the way.
So we need to correct that? And so I'd like to see as a condition that you resubmit the site plan to accommodate the, to clearly indicate the stair.
We submit the, the stairs are depicted on the render, the architect elevations. So, so we can, we can work with that. They're not on, they're not actually on the site plan.
I think we need to resubmit the site plan to show the stair and to redo the landscaping to accommodate the stair.
Okay.
Is my opinion.
Yeah, we can do that.
But frankly, I see this as a good mix of the heights at the beginning of the street at nine, eight, and seven, which are taller structures, and then towards the middle of the street, which are still tall structures at twenty-one, twenty-two to roof eve. And I think the ridges on those structures are probably in the thirty range anyway. So if we do as a condition that also the roof eve is no higher than twenty-seven feet would be my second condition. I understand you to have the roof height at thirty-seven. I just want, that roof eve is sort of what you are kind of confronting people at the street there with. So if that's agreeable, that's, those are my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Atari Theodore, I just want to thank you and Mr. Mbuga for going back to the drawing board, coming back. I especially like the landscaping plan that you brought back, a lot of trees there.
Yeah.
Which would be very, very nice for the neighborhood, especially in that lot, which is basically just right now a garage and being used for parking. So I do appreciate that, and I do like that. And I, I understand the concerns on the neighbors with regards to the height of the property, or height of the proposed building, and I share the, share the same concerns, and I think Dennis, I would agree with Dennis about possibly keeping the roof to be at twenty-seven feet. But to your point, Mr. Theodore, correct, I mean, the zoning would require two, you know, if, if granted this, the two spaces per dwelling unit and the garage, to have the garages in there are a benefit because, like you said, that would take away from the nice landscaping plan that you just went through to put together, and we're right back to, like you said, all concrete to accommodate for those out, exterior parking spots. So. I, again, I understand the concerns from the neighborhood and the neighbors. It seems to be, a lot of it is about the parking. But again, as I stated at the last meeting, it's, Mr. Mbuga can do whatever, what he wants with the property. It's his property. If he's leasing it out for parking right now, I mean, that's his prerogative, but it sounds to me he wants to beautify it and make, and put a nice building on there that's going to be beneficial to the neighborhood and beneficial to the city as far as taxes are concerned, and I would be supportive of the, both the special permit and the variances on this, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I, I also want to just echo some of the comments of my colleagues. While I do share the concern and empathize with the neighbors of, you know, the, the structure itself and the parking concerns and the height, and I, I really do believe that this is actually an improvement on the lot, an improvement on the property, an improvement in the neighborhood. You know, I think, and with the additional updates to this plan, I really think this is a good fit for the neighborhood in general. You know, I think, at least, what I go by is based on the prerequisites and the merits, and, you know, I feel like this, this is a building or a project that can move forward that'd be less impact on, on the neighbors, the neighborhood. So for myself, I can, I can see this as a project that's actually going to enhance the neighborhood overall. So I really think this is a good project for the, for the neighborhood. You know, I am a little disappointed that, you know, the neighbors and the owners, they couldn't come to some kind of agreement. But, you know, at the end of the day, the, what, what the client here or the petitioner wants to do, it's, it's up to them, and I think it fits in with the landscaping layout of that neighborhood. So, so those are my comments. So if there's no other comments, we'll go for a vote.
We need two votes.
And we're going to go with two votes, one for the variance and one for the special permit. And, and Mr. Theodore, you and your client are minimal to, to the conditions of the stairs. We do the, the site plan to, to indicate the stairs on that, and the condition of the roof eve to be no higher than twenty-seven foot.
Yes.
You guys are.
Yes.
Okay, you're minimal to those conditions. All right. If there's no further comments or questions, can we get a motion for the, a special permit?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand nineteen dash forty-seven for a special permit for the use at twenty-three Exeter Street with the two conditions, that the applicant have a roof eve no higher than twenty-seven feet, and that the applicant resubmit a site plan to show the exterior stair deck and relocate the lilac shrubs to accommodate the stairs.
Okay. Second the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan, roll call.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approve the conditions.
Member Jamena.
Approve the conditions.
The special permit has been approved and conditioned. Onto the next vote, can I get a motion for the variance, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand nineteen dash forty-seven for twenty-three Exeter Street for a variance for minimum front edge, minimum lot size, minimum side yard setback, and minimum front yard setback, and minimum lot area per dwelling unit with the two conditions, again, of roof eve no higher than twenty-seven feet and to resubmit the site plan to show the stair from the decks.
And there was one other variance, Mr. McCarthy, for minimum lot width.
I'm sorry, and, and, I'm sorry, correct, yes, minimum lot width.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approved with conditions.
Member Jamena.
Approved.
The variance has been approved and conditioned. Wish you the very best of luck, so.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the next business, under continued, under continued business, ZB dash two thousand nineteen dash forty-nine, a variance. The applicant is Gillian and Jose Silva at twenty-four Bungalow Street. The applicant is seeking variance approval at twenty-four Bungalow Street. The applicant is seeking approval for the construction of an accessory structure that does not meet the setback requirement pursuant to section five point one of the law's ordinance and any other relief required. The proposed project is located in the suburban single-family zoning district. The proposed project is located in the suburban single-family zoning district. Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Um, you want to tell us a little bit about your project and name, name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Gillian Silva, and it's twenty-four Bigelow Street. We are looking to have an extended driveway by, I think it's only like three or four feet, and, um, a sixteen by twenty-five.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two steel garage. That can hold a hundred and fifteen pound winds and sixty-five, a hundred and fifty pound, a hundred and fifty mile winds and sixty-five pounds of snow. And that's it. That's what we're trying to accomplish on our land.
Okay. Uh, thank, thank you. If we have no further comments, we're gonna open up to the public.
Yeah.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor, seeing none of that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, seeing none of that portion of the public hearing is closed. We're gonna open up to the board. The chair recognizes, uh, Mr. Brier.
The Conservation Committee has given you their approval, haven't they?
Yes, they did yesterday.
Yes.
Pending your approval.
All right. Good luck with the new garage, yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy.
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions. Um, the comments from the city, they, they made mention of the curb cut. I'm not quite sure if I understand, um, the curb cut requirements on the site plan. So the applicant, um, you, you're asking for a, uh, curb cut to be widened by approximately three feet from the existing of twenty-two feet? So you're looking for twenty-five foot curb cut? Is that correct?
I don't know what the footage is. I don't.
The maximum in the zoning is twenty feet.
Okay.
So why do you need more than twenty feet?
I think it's the way, so the existing driveway right now, um, we wanted just to bring it out a little bit more to the garage so it's, the garage is sturdier.
We wanted to make it even with, from the garage to the house.
To the house, and the existing driveway is to the house already. And if we went any closer to the, the garage, we'd have to go closer to the house.
If we didn't do that wide, half the garage wouldn't have pavement. It would just be like grass on a portion of the garage.
Well, you could easily have the pavement angle to the garage. You don't have to have the pavement perpendicular to the garage. So you don't necessarily need to widen the curb cut to ask for a variance. And I don't know why we're going beyond the twenty feet required in the zoning anyway. You could, you don't have to have, I mean, to access into the garage, you can have the edge of the pavement curve, angle, whatever, but you don't necessarily have it perpendicular to the garage, correct?
From the street to the garage.
From the street, right.
Yeah. We were just honestly just gonna pave.
I mean, there's, we have neighbors that it's, their drivers are bigger than twenty feet, so. I don't know, like.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not here to argue what your neighbors have.
No, I know, I'm just saying, you're saying the zoning is twenty feet, but I'm just saying...
We're trying to keep a residential feel here, and you're already asking for some relief significantly that we're granting, and I just don't see the point of adding to that with the curb cut. And I was just wondering if we could keep the curb cut at twenty feet and modify the site plan to show a twenty-foot curb cut with an angled pavement going to the garage.
So, so what do you mean, like twenty feet and then angle it out? I don't know what you're saying.
Yeah, so here's the street.
So, so twenty feet at the street?
Yeah.
So currently it's twenty-two feet, I think, right?
Twenty-two. And then what, it was what Christine was explaining to us, and then when you go up, it goes, it angles towards the garage, so it's not to the street. I know it, I understand.
Yep, exactly.
So what?
So here's the street, honey, right? Here's the street. This is the twenty-two feet. We're gonna go like this, and then angle it like this towards the garage. Does that make sense?
I guess.
I just don't see the reason to make a bigger impact with the curb cut larger than was provided in the zoning, so.
Okay.
As a condition that will maintain the existing curb cut at twenty-two feet, then?
Twenty-two?
So existing is twenty-two.
I don't know what it's existing.
Zoning allows twenty.
Okay.
And what the requirement that you're showing seems to indicate that you're asking for twenty-five. And so I'm suggesting that you maintain the twenty-two that's provided, which is two feet over zoning already.
Okay.
Get it?
Okay.
I think so.
Okay. I'll show you when we get home.
That's, that's, I, 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 um, I was glad to see that you were able to, um, get the, um, CONCOM on your, um, side here, so that was a big question mark in my head.
Yes.
As far as whether or not they'd be able to see this as something that could grant the approval on.
Yes.
So, uh, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
And, um, uh, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan.
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I, I kinda, I agree with Dennis if we can keep that at the twenty-two curb. You can, you can, like, like you say, you can angle it back, you can angle it in on the back end.
Yeah.
How far in do you have to go?
As long as the curb cut stays at twenty-two feet.
How far in do you have to go before you?
I don't know. Jared, Jared, is there any, like, recommendations on that?
Typically, the setback is three feet from the property line, so if they angled it back at least three feet from it, then that would count.
Okay.
Yeah, and you have, you know, you'd have plenty, you still have plenty of space to angle it, angle it in on the back end and put the, uh, new, new proposed pavement and stuff, so. But, yeah, otherwise, I'm, yeah, I, I have no concerns with this. Uh, DBD, uh, provided in their comments that they believe that the location of the garage is the best possible location it could be, considering the wetlands. Uh, CONCOM, CONCOM, excuse me, um, gave you the approval. They provided you also different conditions, which we probably would, we would ask that those conditions be met as well.
Yeah, we'll do rock to offset some of the water.
Yeah, so we'd, we'd be asked if you'd adopt, presuming you're, you're in agreement with that, we'd, we'd adopt these and these, uh, uh, in, uh, providing for these variances, those conditions as well that the CONCOM provided, and, uh, I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Uh, the chair recognizes Mr. Jamina.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, actually, it's a good thing, it's an improvement, but since, if ever we're gonna, you know, approve it, uh, did you see the comments from the, from the, the planning?
I'm sorry, if we don't?
Comments, the comments. Did you read it? Did you read them?
No.
Okay. First of all, I think, uh, I believe.
Oh, okay.
The driveway, the driveway is gonna be bordering the wetland, right? It's gonna be very close to the wetland.
It's within the hundred feet of a wetland, I guess.
The whole house is in the wrong spot anyways.
The wetland, um, Conservation Committee said if they were trying to approve the building of the house now.
It wouldn't even be built.
It wouldn't even be built.
So anything we do is not...
Well, let me read number four. It says, Star believes the location of the garage is the most suitable location. If the board and Conservation Commission were to allow it to remain on the property, if the detached garage were to meet the tariff fee, front yard setback requirement, and the ten, ten feet setback from the primary dwelling structure, the garage will be located in the, in a bordering vegetation wetland.
Yes, if we were to put it back more, it would be.
In wetlands.
In wetlands.
Uh, excuse me?
If we were to move it back more.
Okay.
It would be in the wetlands.
Or if we were to move it to the left.
Or if we move it to the left, it would be in the wetlands.
Okay, all right. All right, then, okay, well, that's good. Then another one, uh, if you, if we can read, uh, I'm gonna ask you because the one, the one was to make sure you, you, you have this thing. Do you have the building permit from the Division of Development Services? Number six.
Number six.
B.
So we'll get the building permit?
You have it already?
No, we're waiting for the approval.
They said we needed approval first.
We had to get approval first.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jamina. Um, you know, I, I, I agree with my colleagues. I think this, this is a project that, um, it makes sense, you know, you got conservation approval. Um, you know, I feel like, um, you know, I, I have no, I have no real concerns, and there's no one in opposition, which is always a good thing. Um, and, and you, and you are amenable to the conditions to, to maintain the curb cut at no more than twenty-two feet. And, um, you know, any other, all the other conditions that, um, uh, conservation's there for as well.
Yes.
All right. With, um, with that being said, is there no more comments or questions from the board? We'll have a, a motion for the variance.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand nineteen dash forty-nine for the variances at twenty-four Bigelow Street, um, with the following two con- well, following conditions, um, that the site plan be revised to show a curb cut no larger than the twenty-two foot existing, and that the, um, two conditions, uh, from the approval from the Conservation Commission, one for the driveway pitch, and the second for the applicant to install a one-foot-wide crest stone trench along the driveway, uh, be accepted.
Second.
Uh, motion second by Mr. Brier. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Uh, approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approved with conditions.
Member Jamina.
Approved.
All right, you've been approved and conditioned, wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. All right, move on to the next item on our agenda under new business, um, ZB dash two thousand nineteen dash fifty. The petition is a variance. The applicant, uh, Joseph C. Clermont, Esquire, care of Joanne Wicks, personal representative of the estate of Mary M. Emanuel, property located at seven fifty-five School Street. The applicant is seeking variance approval to construct a single-family home in a vacant lot at seven fifty-five School Street. The home is in the urban neighborhood, single-family zoning district, and requires variance approval under section five point one for a lot that does not meet the minimum frontage requirement and for any other relief required of the laws or ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Attorney Joseph Clermont appearing for the applicant. We're, uh, seeking a continuance of this hearing for a couple of reasons. One, a new plan is, uh, being prepared to show the proposed house on the site. There's a vacant lot, uh, we're five feet short on frontage, which is the request for variance. And secondly, my client unfortunately has had some health problems that's gonna set her back a bit, uh, so she's asked if we could continue this until next February, which I understand is a, a lengthy continuance, but I think it'd be necessary in this case if the board would consider continuing to the meeting on February twenty-fourth. It would be appreciated.
Okay. Uh, the, thank, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
If there's no questions from the board, um, we'll vote to continue this matter to February twenty-fourth. No comments? Uh, can, can a motion to continue this, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB two thousand nineteen dash fifty for seven fifty-five School Street for variance to be continued to February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
It's a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brier, um, roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Um, approve continues to February twenty-fourth.
Approve continues to February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the continuance to February twenty-fourth.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Jamina.
Approved.
All right, uh, you've been approved for the continuance, sir. We'll, we'll see you February twenty-fourth.
See you in the next day.
Very much.
Yeah. Moving on to our next business under new business, um, ZB dash two thousand nineteen dash fifty-one, the petition is a variance. The applicant, Stephen Gary, in care of one sixty Middlesex Street. Um, the applicant is seeking a variance approval to construct a five-story mixed-use building with twenty-four apartments and a fifteen hundred square foot ground floor commercial unit in a vacant lot at one sixty Middlesex Street. The lot is in the downtown mixed zoning district and requires a variance under section five point one for maximum floor area ratio and under section six point one point four, uh, one D for the off-seat parking requirement and for any other relief of the laws or ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Chairman Peck, members of the board, for the record. My name is Attorney Steve Geary. I represent one sixty Middlesex Street LLC and its director and manager, who is Justin McFauling, who is not here tonight. He had a, uh, medical emergency, so he couldn't be here. Also with me, um, at the monitor is, um, Peter Vacco, Vacco Associates. He is the architect in this plan, and also from, uh, Hancock Associates is Brian, Brian Godrow, the engineer, um, both of probably whom you're familiar with. Just a little bit of background on this, uh, project. This land is a vacant lot on Middlesex Street, around thirty-nine hundred square feet. It is, um, a lot that's been around for a long time. It was, uh, in surplus land, I believe, at one point when my client purchased it, and the intent is to, uh, construct this project. A lot of thought went into, uh, what to build here, so what we first did is we met informally with, uh, Christine McCall with the Department of Planning and Development and with Jared. We got some initial feedback, and from there, we set up a meeting with all of the, uh, department heads. Most showed up, uh, there were, it was a big conference room, probably eight or nine department heads showed up, and we took a lot of feedback, um, from those department heads, including parking and transportation, um, which is primarily, um, the issue that we're here tonight for. From there, we went to the, uh, planning board for an informal hearing. We got a lot of feedback from the planning board at that. Beyond the feedback that we had received, um, from the informal process that leading up to that, uh, my, the architect and the engineer implemented a lot of the very good suggestions that we got. We ended up, uh, before the planning board last week, and we received unanimous approval for a, uh, site plan approval, as well as the special permit to construct this property. Our final step is be here, as before, you folks here tonight, for variance for parking. It meets all the requirements, um, for the variance. It is a special hardship and owing to the circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape, and topography of such land structures, and especially affecting such landed structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district. And the public good is a desire belief, may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and the intent of zoning will be satisfied without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent of zoning. That's all explained in our application. I can answer those questions specifically if you want me to, but the, the, the project is, as you can see to your left, it's gonna be a fifteen hundred square foot commercial building, uh, the first floor. Above that's gonna be six floors of, um, I'm sorry, four floors of six units each. These units are all about four hundred and forty-six square feet per unit. It's a very interesting design that I'll let Peter get into in a minute, um, but the, where this is, and I'm sure you're all very familiar with this area, there is no parking. There's no parking on-site at all. It's a downtown, middle of downtown area, but it meets the GM Plan, Plan for this area. It meets the Lowell Sustainable twenty twenty-five, and it meets the Master Plan of Lowell. This is the type of project, uh, that the city has been trying to bring in developers or use our own developers here in the city, uh, to invest in this property. This is gonna be close to a four million dollar property on Middlesex Street, and as we, uh, discussed with the planning board, this is gonna meld in to everything that's going on with the GM Plan, whether it's the university's development on that area, the new development that's going back there, the parking garages, the judicial center, the project that we had before this board on Appleton Street, the other project on Appleton Street. It's all coming together, and this is something that the city has been trying to accomplish for over 20 years. And I think that this building will complement that process substantially. When this building goes up, it's going to, like other development that's gone up recently in that area, it's going to bring in other developers that are going to want to, that are going to see value in property there. So this is a complete benefit to the city. It's exactly what they wanted. As far as the parking, as I said, there is no parking, but we spoke with the parking director, we spoke with transportation, we had a letter from them that I believe the board has. The city is no longer interested in leasing parking spots in the garages. You have a parking plan, you can see where all the parking garages are there, but these units are different than most that probably ever come before these boards. These are small units, and the owner is seeking tenants who are interested in micro-mobility. That's a new term, I'm sure you've all heard it, but it's an important term in all of the urban centers, because that's the only option they have. So in this property, Mr. McFauling's going to have, you know, a contract with a scooter company, there's going to be bike racks for biking, there's going to be, you know, a plan that he's going to hand out how to get, you know, other transportation through Uber. It's within the half a mile walk, inside of a half a mile walk to the public transit station. There's buses, there's cabs, and he is marketing these units, that are probably only going to be single-person units, to people who are interested in micro-mobility, which is the solution to all of these issues that the urban centers have when you try to create more housing and a good blend of housing and commercial property in a city that's a previously rundown part of the city. So we think that this is a really good project, a win for the city, a win for my client if we receive approval here tonight, but the project has so many more pluses to it, and I'd like to turn it over briefly to Peter to explain that, exactly what you'd be approving tonight if we do get approvals. So Peter?
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. I won't go too much into detail in covering the same exact things, but I do just want to elaborate on some of the base level information that was just conveyed there. The idea is, yes, 24 units of small units, they are, in many ways, they're micro, they are intended to reach a demographic that's interested in low-carbon footprint living, like that more urban dweller who probably doesn't have a car to begin with. Talking about micro-mobility, that's an aspect of it, but certainly a biking community. There's even thoughts of having a shared bicycle. There's all kinds of interesting cycling options out there that you can have the trailer-type bicycles, there's all kinds of things. So a little bit more of a, maybe a bit more of a communal feel to this building, and that's really the whole concept here, is that with the small units, we have actually a nice lobby, there's good area to hang out in, so it's that thing where we're hoping that there's a bit of interaction between residents there. But, you know, architecturally, it's really doing some neat things. This has been about a two-year process for me. It started with Steve Stoll a while ago, coming and talking about this site, figuring out what we could do, and we really, we came to this, actually a year and a half ago, with the help of National Park Service, we talked a lot about the materials. What we want to use here is terracotta, so it actually is a high-quality facade. It's going to be a little bit more in keeping with the brick. It's an earthen material, it's fired, it's going to feel legitimate, and we think that's a good thing for the Brick District. And also matching the coloration of the district, but at the same time, maybe adding just that little bit of pizzazz, that's something that does make it feel a little bit more newer, modern, fresh, and it does put a stamp on that corner. So we're really proud of that. I'm going to quickly run through the plans, not to bore you too much with them. The parking and the walking plan, which you have in front of you, of course, that's relating to the parking matters at hand, but this really is a good walkable district. And as it's developing out, this changing, this morphing, particularly with the courthouse, all of the pieces are there for it to become ripe and alive. Any of the architects in the room will know that word milieu, and it's where you start to create a feeling where things start to feel right, and you just know as people, as we know when an area starts to feel right. And you have to plant those seeds, and this is just one of those elements that's going to start to do that in this area. From a site planning standpoint, we are a corner lot, we have, we're filling the entire lot, and you have heard probably from the planning board comments possibly, our far-left edge, which I actually have a physical model here that may be helpful, certainly as we're looking at some other views, but just for orientation's sake, this church, there's a blank facade over here that we have facing this church, and we have lighting on there, we have a few treatments that I'll get into later, but conceptually, that's sitting on the lot line. Our rear lot line, we're 10 feet off of the rear lot line, and what we're doing back there is we're essentially using that for all of our bike storage, we have loading zones, all those things. Move-in, move-out is all through the back, it's not through the front. We have our mechanical rooms, things of that nature. And that 10-foot space is all just right here in the back. So primary residential entry is right through here, and then we have a commercial space, as was mentioned, about 1,500 square feet. We're setting it up for a restaurant, there will be a grease duct in there and all of those things, but it won't necessarily be a restaurant, it might be a coffee shop, could be a clothing shop for all we know, but it has some flexibility. If I can, there we go. We are just slightly over from an FAR perspective. If you notice, it's just fractional. We're essentially meeting an FAR. It's almost de minimis, but when we add in our elevator override, our access to the roof through our roof headhouse, we essentially go over an FAR. And we could carve it out in other places in the building, but we decided to go forward and move forward with accepting the need for the variance. Ground floor, as I mentioned again, middlesex is all going to be in the bottom of these sheets. Residential entry is here to the far left. It is an elevated building, it's going to be modern, it's going to feel really fresh and new, it's going to feel like any of the new downtown district buildings that are being built in many major cities. This is going to feel rich and vibrant. This is the main residential lobby. Everything else here is open, that's that tenant space. We are designing it for a number of bathrooms, the number of plumbing fixtures that would be required by a restaurant of that size. And we actually have about three feet of grade change from this front corner at Middlesex and South up to the back of the building. So we have a little bit of stepping that we have to do inside, but more or less, secondary means of egress is out the back, as well as a loading zone is right out the back. Some of the micro-mobility items that were touched on prior, there will be a scooter rental that's available to residents only. It's not meant to be outside of the building, but it's going to be residents only, and that will be housed inside. Bike racks will be out here in the back. And this is a typical residential floor, all of the floors are exactly the same. We have the unit typology, I'll just use this one in the upper left as an example. When you enter the unit, it's big and open. These function as studios, but they're a semi-enclosed bedroom, meaning there generally is one or two walls that partially enclose the room. As of right now, what's spec'd currently is a Murphy bed that the developer's going to do, that that Murphy bed will flip up and will actually have a dining room table on the backside, and so it's great for that home worker, great for that person who needs that extra breakout workspace. Yeah, and so then we have essentially a line of services. It's a galley kitchen with a really nice little living room, and then there are generally one bath. We have four Type 2 dwelling units within the building. It's the unit that is always in the upper right-hand corner of the plan, and that has some extra spatial requirements on it, but we were able to meet it. So from an accessibility perspective, whether it be MAB or ADA, we are fully compliant. Yet, and that's just one of the other real benefits of this building, is what other building in this district offers, you know, a fully accessible option. We'll talk a little bit, we have some financials, too. These are relatively affordable, not necessarily going to be going within an affordable cap on them, but from market affordability, they're going to be quite affordable and absorbable in the marketplace for the right person who wants it. These are all the same every floor. So we have four floors, six units per floor, total of 24 units. Non-accessible, it's not a common roof deck, nothing like that, it's just all mechanicals on the roof. We do have condensers, primarily in a electric building. We are going for large solar arrays here to offset a lot of our solar consumption. There's only, ideally, we wouldn't be bringing in any gas. We'd like to be more solar-reliant, certainly more electric. So we are using heat pumps entirely for this building to heat and cool. That's kind of neat, and so it's novel from that standpoint, that they're low-impact on the floor plans, they fit the small-unit typologies, but, you know, from a technology standpoint, it's pretty slick. From outside, we are, you know, we have that standard base, which is a retail base. It's going to be a simulated storefront. We have a Polish window manufacturer whom we have specified currently for this project is able to do these really big, open windows with extraordinarily high R-values. So that's the other big value. From sound and from an R-value standpoint, they're an incredible manufacturer, we're using Intus Windows. Our entries are loaded to the left, the residential entry is to the far left, and then up from there, we have a modernist aesthetic where we are definitely breaking the building up into really thirds. When you look at it, the light orange, and we're using really color to break a lot of that up. We have a light orangish color, and then we have a reddish, light-red, brick-brown color, and like I said, that's a terracotta, so it actually is an earthen material. And at the top, we have some accent features yet to be determined whether or not that's aluminum or metal or steel. Definitely going to be a metal of some sort, and we think it's probably painted steel at this point, but it's that crowning element, it feels a little bit more like a historical cornice. So I think that made everyone happy from a historical standpoint. Yet again, we had essentially a unanimous vote there for the project as well. On the side facing South Street, the one comment from historical was that they just want us to come back to them with the signage. They are not comfortable yet with where the signage was in the rendering that you first started out with in this presentation, but nor are they really comfortable with the signage you see here. So that will be a continued conversation, whether it be size or material, how we're lighting it, all of those types of things yet to be determined, but it will be. So massing-wise, we start to bend down here toward the residential areas to what would be our right in this elevation. So middlesex is on the left here, and then we're starting to crescendo down. So that's the ideal from a formal massing standpoint. The rear of the building, we are 10 feet off of our property line at this point, but essentially, we're doing some of the same concepts here. One thing I should mention is that, and we were applauded for this, was the insertion of what were, I guess, faux infills. Conceptually, we've all seen the mill buildings that have been infilled with another type of brick, and it can actually, it just, it's a continuation of a good thing, more or less. Maybe I'm not saying that correctly, that brick infilling is something, it's familiar. And so we thought that it would be a good use here to bring the same concept forward, that this would hearken back to maybe the mill buildings that are in the area, some of those openings that do get infilled, and so it was a great way to break up the facade. And historical particularly liked it. So we repeated that in the rear. The elevation is our blankest facade. To some would say this is one of the more interesting facades, that we've done the same faux infilling of historical fenestration that has been taken out, and we are accenting and lighting this facade. So we have downlight cans that are going to be on this facade that will wash this whole edge, so it would really be quite beautiful. Also, from a safety perspective, we do have a few, you can't see them from where you are, but we do have a few security cameras that will be called out, especially on that particular edge. So we think we're treating this edge pretty well. Historical likes it. No one's really liked the idea of having like public art there or anything like that. That hasn't been particularly well-received. Really, from there, I should probably turn it over, I've been talking for a long time.
Just a couple of things, Peter. The, if you could speak to the ceiling heights to give the units a spacious look.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we're looking at about 9 foot ceiling heights here. So volumetrically, we're giving more height, so although they may be in small in footprint, it's really nice, they're going to breathe, and they feel extremely good. I actually should have brought the, we have a video walkthrough of some of the units, and they're spectacular, they feel much larger than they really are. So it's a volumetric play. It feels quite good.
And the only other thing is we would be going before the city council for those decks.
Indeed. We have our Juliet balconies, even though they protrude just three to four inches, we have to go get the relief. And it seemed worthwhile to the owner to keep them, everybody likes them, being built outbound of the face of the terracotta versus being inside of the opening. So we feel that we do have that step still to go.
So I did not mention, but Peter referenced it, in addition to the planning board, we did go before the historic board and received unanimous approval, and that was not just the meeting, that was a long process. Steve Stoll was involved in this for a long, long time, and he's just as excited about this project as we are. So we're happy to answer any questions. Brian's here, if you have any questions regarding the site plan, but mostly that was all addressed with the planning board. We are under several conditions with the planning board that this board may want to adopt and require the same things, but we're happy to answer any questions that maybe we didn't touch on.
Thank you, Attorney Gary. Thank you for the comments, and thank you for the well-informed and very thorough there of the project. We'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, in favor, seeing none that portion of the public here is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition, seeing none that portion of the public here is closed. We're going to open up to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions, but wow. This is a lot on that site, and boy, this is, I think, the first real, other than the courthouse, which I don't see a lot of contextual cues here that you take in with the courthouse, which probably is a good thing, in any event. Yeah, this is amazing that you're going this far on this lot, and boy, it's tremendous. I want to get into the piece on the planning board, the conditions regarding the access. What are your thoughts? If you could just kind of walk through what exactly you intend to provide for that whole loading condition, because you don't really, you said you have about three-foot grade change, and so what's your thought as far as what you might do there? If you could just kind of walk me through what your hopes are.
Indeed. So maybe we take a moving truck scenario with a resident moving in. Certainly. So that moving truck would be encouraged and probably permitted to park on South Street. It does not actually, there is no curb cut to enter onto our site into that back area, per se, but it would be, it would park there and essentially offload it into the back of the building and brought in every, the resident's belongings would be brought in through the back. Similarly, if we had a restaurant or whatever commercial tenant that is there who's bringing in stock would do something similar. So there is plenty of parking there on South Street, and there is area there. You bring up a good point. We have talked a little bit internally about trying to get a loading zone, a commercial loading zone, possibly on that portion of South Street, just that section so that we could have a commercial truck parked there. And maybe just for reference, I can point to on the site how this would work, but I'll just approach the monitor.
And Peter, wasn't there a ramp, too, that was going to be?
We can't do it internally, it would be too long for accessibility.
Right. I thought from the outside.
Oh, from the outside.
Yeah.
Yes, from the outside, absolutely, from the outside, just continue the sidewalk, get it from the front to the back. But a moving truck would park along the side of South Street, offload it and enter through the rear of the building.
Where does it go once it goes in the rear of the building? I thought the floor plan doesn't have a connection. If we're doing like move-in.
Yeah.
For furniture or move-in for the baby grand piano that someone feels like they want to put in.
Yeah.
How do they get to the elevator?
Yeah, that's a great question. So actually, in this plan, which shows a way I could zoom from here, but if, I'll approach the monitor again quickly.
This end of double doors is the outdoor access. This hatch area is elevated and raised. You walk in through the double doors, and you would go down the five steps to get down to this level, you enter the back of the lobby, basically what you may be, it's the lobby.
Jared, I don't have that plan online in the application.
Yeah.
That's a great plan, I'm glad you have that solution.
It has, so it's actually not, it's our fault, so this is relatively new.
Okay, so that's great, you solved it.
This was handled in plan form, just by hand, actually, with the board last week, and so we finally got it drafted, we got it done, and we just didn't get it in Jared's hands yet, but there it is.
Okay. Sweet. Okay, very, very nice. Okay. Then, just tell me a little, I'm so thrilled about the roof area, you've got electric, so you're doing heat pumps.
Yes.
Which is tremendous.
Yeah.
So no gas?
No gas. No gas. The emergency generator will be oil tank, so we can actually be natural gas-free in this building.
Okay. Great.
Even for domestic water heating.
And then you said something about photovoltaics, maybe?
Indeed. I don't think it's a maybe, I think it's probably a very high likelihood. So, you know, with any development, there's that first cost, and there's that thing that the developer will do two or three years down the road after they've started to pay down their mortgage, everything settles and gets going. That's ultimately the question, how much is done initially off the bat and how much is done at a later date? The roof is well set up for. is well-set up for it. It's south-facing. The way that it actually crescendos would work perfectly. So, we have the roof area set apart, and as well, the roof that we have specified is to be solar-ready. So, essentially, there's surprisingly wide away of array of membrane suppliers out there. Actually, many of them, you avoid their warranty by putting solar on a relatively low-slip roof. So, in our case, so we have it specified, we have the intention of being entirely solar-ready. And there's actually a large conduit. We have already, our engineers are working on the project. Our electrical engineer has a large conduit that travels up and down through the building, and the intention is, if we can do, and actually have a meter that can spin backwards and be really solar-ready to offset not only our own usage, or just feeding back into grid, however we set that up.
It reminds me of a small-scale Thondek Exchange, almost.
Indeed.
What Thondek Exchange accomplished, which is a great milestone, I think, for the city. This is kind of taking it to another level for that whole smaller tenant space. Tremendous.
Indeed.
I think I would just suggest that maybe we make the planning board conditions, or we adopt those as our conditions as well, but I really don't see any reason not to go forward with this. It's, wow.
Thank you.
It'd be tremendous to see.
Thank you.
Oh, rent structure?
Excuse me?
Rent structure. What are we looking at? Do you have an idea as to what the direction they're going in for the units?
For the structural?
Rent cost.
Oh, rent cost.
I think it was 13 to 1500?
Right. That's my recollection as well.
So, it is, it's relatively affordable.
Right.
For a couple or a single person.
Yep.
And, you know, that, he believes, and I think Peter agrees, that these are going to be absorbed pretty quickly.
Tremendous.
And that will, you know, hopefully lure more developers to do something similar. There's so many properties in the city that aren't being used as to their best advantage. And that's a win for everybody in the city, including the developer.
Okay.
Right. And to echo that, this is a long-term hold for our client. So, they have a vested interest in making the building, it's going to be quality, it's going to stand the test of time. The building is named the Carter. It's after his son, his oldest son, and has every intention of willing it to him and to his children thereafter. So, that's the intention.
It's a family project for our client. He really is motivated to, he loves the city law, not from here, but he's doing a lot in law, and he loves it here.
Tremendous. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's good to know about the naming. That was going to be one of my questions, because I'm not sure if you know about it. One of my favorite movies was New Jack City, and there was a facility in that movie called the Carter, which wasn't really a very nice facility. And this obviously is not going to be that. So, I was, my question was going to be, I hope it's based off of that movie, because that's, it was a great movie, though. So, but anyways, but no. Great presentation, as always. I appreciate it. My questions were going to be as far as storage is concerned and access in the back, but you provided that. Because I was looking at the plans that were provided, that space there is listed for bike storage, but with no access to the front portion of the lobby or whatever. I'm like, how are the people going to get their, get access to the bikes unless they go outside and come back? So, I mean, was, and I don't know, maybe you can answer that, Attorney Gary. I mean, is there any thought, I mean, I always get queasy about small-unit apartments, and I can understand the situation here. It seems like it fits in, but was there any thought about bigger-sized apartments that?
Fewer sizes, fewer units and bigger?
Yeah.
They went through all that. It's not, a project like this, to do it the way they want to do in the city, it's not economically feasible to do it any other way than this, you know, 1-4-1, or 1-4 from the commercial. Not only that, but as Peter said, if you could see the video going through this, it doesn't, I know what you're saying about a cramped unit, but it doesn't look like the old-fashioned cramped unit. It has high ceilings, there's glass everywhere. They're going to be looking out. It's tall glass. It's very, very well-built windows, well-structured windows, and it's not going to have that look. And this is what we think the tenants will want.
No, I, listen, I totally agree with you. I just had to ask them, like, what the thoughts were in that, and with the nine-foot, yeah, with the nine-feet ceiling, no, yes.
Right. It's the new thing, and it's, you know, it's going to take a little getting used to for everybody, but, you know, I think that's the trend.
Yeah. So, okay. But, and again, and I don't think many people are going to need a lot of storage and, you know, for some, for these apartments. Anyways, I know that the back thing was said bike storage only, but I mean, for like any other regular storage. I mean, I don't think that that's going to be, that shouldn't be an issue either.
I envision the tenants having a backpack, a bike, and a wallet, and that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
They're open, open a boat.
True. I do have to ask, though, that model that you drafted, that's obviously not the scale, right? So, it's like, it is fabulous. I gotta say, that's the first, that's the first time I've, you know, I've seen someone bring in, you know, that type of, you know.
Absolutely. I can actually bring it up to you, if you'd like to see it closer.
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah, that'd be great, actually.
How long did, how long did it take to like, put this together?
Fortunately, we have a laser cutter.
Oh, okay.
This is actually fairly close to scale. It's, this is, this one's- Probably three to four feet closer than it really, in the model, than it really is. It's actually almost large enough for a vehicle to drive through. Essentially, the similar scale. And one of the reasons that we located the lighting where we did up here is because it's just right over the church.
That'd be nice, like, access to seeing it banging on the church there, like, so.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if Mr. Brier, Mr. Brier, Mr. Uh-
I'll come back for it.
You've got nice metal pieces that kind of come off the cornice elements and the canopy. I mean, this is going to be tremendous. This is a great study model, though.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Indeed, with those extra elements on there, I think it will feel richer.
And then, the color tones that you brought out, I mean, it's going to be tremendous.
That's great. Thank you. That's like, awesome. That's awesome. Yeah, to that, to that point, no, I don't have any, I don't have any concerns. I mean, the, and especially the parking is in the area. You got the early garages, literally right across the street. So, that shouldn't be-
Right. And just to clarify, too, on the parking, when we talk to the park director, they have no problem with tenants leasing the overnight parking, which they have an abundance of. There's a lot of on-street parking now, but we, I mean, I would think as a city, we want to have a parking problem, right? We want to, we want people to be down there. We want the parking meters to be full. We want it to be vibrant. And this is really the only part of downtown that still has meters available all day. And, you know, if there's no meters available, that means we're winning, right? So, that's the hope here.
Yep. Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Gary. Appreciate it. Yep. So, I think this is a great project, and I wish you the absolute best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Jemena.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So, just a few questions. So, the tenants are conditioned by the micro-mobility only? Only those who can qualify will rent the apartment?
No, not all. This is open market rent. Anybody can come rent these.
Okay, I can rent. Okay, yeah. Because actually, you cannot confine it to that. Where probably my question, the other question was answered. I was concerned about parking because sometimes you don't, you have some unforeseen situations, like if this one attracts restaurants, and a restaurant attracts a lot of people, and there's going to be parking situation, except if they'll have to probably pay the meter likely. I think, I think it's answered there. But I think it's a great project, and it's good for the city. I wish you luck.
The good thing about the restaurant, if it is a restaurant, that's usually, you know, sometime after four or five where it gets busy, and that's when all the meters, the daytime workers are gone. That's where there's a lot of meter parking available. And I don't even, I don't even think they have to feed the meters after 6:00 PM, right? I'm not, I don't think they do. So, it'd be basically free parking. Like, when we all go to dinner downtown, we find a parking spot that would not normally be there during the day. So, I think if it is a restaurant, and they can't commit to that yet, but if it is, I think it blends well with what we're trying to do.
Well, actually, we can't really tell what kind of business that will attract. It could be a restaurant. It could be something that can have a traffic flow for the rest of the day. So, I was just saying that.
Thank you.
And if I may add, very likely that this will have a daytime operation, too, maybe where it's more attracting daytime lunch walkers, really people coming from the courthouse. That would be ideal, right? So, car-free, if possible.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jemena. I'm the chair recognizes Mr. Brier.
Excellent presentation. I think you guys know you hit a home run here. I enthusiastically support it.
Thank you.
You were, you were good. Gary, yeah, not so much.
I get that a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Brier. You know, I won't, I won't take too long, but I do agree with my colleagues. Amazing project, amazing presentation. I think this is the kind of high-quality, high-caliber development that we're looking for, especially in the downtown. You know, I think, I really believe this is the future of not just urban housing, but just, you know, any, any development that has a large parcel to have a mixed use of business and residential. I think this is the future of this housing. So, I think this is an amazing project. You know, I don't, I'm not concerned with parking, you know, traffic or vehicles, you know? I mean, you have an onsite scooter rental company or service that you offer. I think, I think that's amazing. That's unheard of, I think. It's, like I said, this is the future. This project is building this site. And then, you know, with these units, like you said, they seem to be small, but they're really, with the open windows and glass windows and the high ceilings and, my goodness, a Murphy bed. And I mean, it's very, very creative. I think, I think this is a very futuristic housing and mixed use of residential and business. And, you know, in my eight, nine, maybe almost 10 years on the board, this is my first time seeing a 3D model, so kudos to you, sir, Mr. Gary. You know, I, I just, I think it's an amazing project. I wish we had more similar projects to this throughout the city. So, I'm in favor. If there's no other comments or questions from my colleagues. Oh, the chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy.
And one comment that I had earlier was to condition our approval based on the six conditions that were adopted by the planning board. One of them is a six-month after issuance of the occupancy permit, the applicant will review the opportunity to incorporate additional micro-mobility solutions into the building with the DPD staff based on the actual occupancy of the residences. And then, a second review will occur one year after issuance of the occupancy permit. Jared, I think the board would love to be part of that, just to understand how the whole micro-mobility solution piece is working, and for us to understand how it would be able to affect other projects coming up.
Absolutely. I think you have one of two ways. Either staff could report back to you on what we have discussed with the applicant, or the applicant could return as part of a general request. It may not necessarily have to be that formal.
Yeah, I think the staff reporting back to the board would be good enough. But I think that that's certainly something we'd like to use as a learning tool going forward, because we see this as hopefully a way forward here for us to get the cars off the road.
Right. And the idea of just kind of behind that was that the owner won't really know what the need is.
Yep.
Until he gets the tenants in there and starts getting some feedback, so.
That's, but I think this is an opportunity for us to just kind of-
Absolutely.
-get on the same page as to where things are headed. So, that's all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. And you're amenable to all the conditions for the planning board? We're going to-
Yes, and we'll supplement the new plan as well, so everybody has a copy of it.
Perfect, perfect. I think I can, I can speak on behalf of the chairman. I think he would be disappointed that he's not here to see this plan, and I think it's an amazing project. So, I'm in full support. So, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll move to a vote and a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion for ZB 2019-51 for variances for 160 Middlesex Street for mixed-use building with 24 studio apartments for variance for, let's see, required variances on section 5.1 for maximum floor area ratio, and on section 6.1.4, 1D for off-street parking requirements, and for any other relief required for lower sorting ordinance, with the condition that we adopt the six conditions from the planning board approval.
Second.
Motion second by Mr. Brier. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Approve the conditions.
Member Jemena.
Approve the conditions.
You've been approved the conditions unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jared.
He says so much.
Have a good evening. Thank you so much. Going on, on the next item on our agenda under other business, we have minutes for approval for October 28, 2019. Any, any comments or questions for the minutes before we move for approval by any of the members?
No comment.
Okay. Seeing no comments, can we move to vote and a motion for approval of the minutes of October 28?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 28, 2019.
Second.
Motion second by Mr. Callahan. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Peck.
Approve the minutes for October 28.
Member Callahan.
Approve minutes for October 28.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for October 28.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Jemena.
Approved.
All right. Minutes for October 28 have been approved. No other items on the agenda. Just for the public's notice, and just so everyone knows and the board knows, we have no items or agenda for November 25, so will be no meeting on the 25th. The next scheduled meeting will be December 9.
Can we take a vote on that? Can we just take a vote on that? No?
Okay. All right. Seeing there's, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to adjourn the meeting?
A second.
Second by Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I have it.
Since there's no meeting, just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you at October, on December 9.
Thank you, Sean. Same to everybody else.
Echo the same comments. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right. Thank you, and have a good evening. Meeting adjourned.